Chairman Fielding, we do have a quorum if you'd like to start.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Brandy, will you do a roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Cheryl Neme.
Present.
Chris McGuire.
Present.
Michelle Reese.
Present.
Meg Fielding.
Present.
And do we have any other board members on the line?
Joe is on.
Thank you, Joe Wych. Okay.
Okay, I'd like everybody to look at the minutes from the July 19th, January 19th and 21st. Were there any changes or additions to those minutes from anybody? Okay, not hearing anything. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 19th meeting?
Ma'am, this is your office. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 19th meeting.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You have to unuse yourself to vote.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Those minutes are approved. And now may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 21 meeting?
I make a motion to approve January 21st meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 21st meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Those minutes are approved as well. Okay, Matt, are you going to do the presentation?
Yes, ma'am. Good to see everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Planning Commission members. This is a rezoning case request for CZ 2020 0124. It's located at Garmin Road, right here at the south intersection of basically Old Monroe Road and Garmin Road. So it's 11.04 acres. The current zoning is SF1. That's a single-family, low to moderate-density residential. And then the proposed zoning would be a conditional zoning for light industrial. The applicant here is Darren Sutton with Garmin Road Ventures LLC. And the request would to be able to get the applicant the intent to to build one three-story office building that's got self-storage. That's three-story with office on the bottom. And then two more buildings that are one-story, and they have office and flex space warehouses. This is the aerial, you'll see here, the existing area is kind of, you know, it's mainly all wooded, this parcel is. They're going to keep a good amount of tree save along the south and eastern part of the property. Existing site pictures out here showing the tree line. This is Garmin Road. The site will be over here to the right. And this is looking from South Fork Road into the site, so it'll be coming up here on the corner. I was going back to the existing zoning with this, this area being mainly single-family residential. You did have the exception of the light industrial here to the south. And that is an existing transportation industry there. And the recommended future land use here still keeps this area office-industrial across the road as well. And then you've got the medium residential coming in to the east. So it includes a lot of different types of land uses and mixtures. And this big circle that you guys see here, that's the overlay district. When you all hear staff or anyone mention village centers or overlays, this is what we're talking about. And they're located in the Old Monroe Village. This is just a breakdown again, talking about the sites, 11.4 acres. They're proposing to rezone so they could construct three office facilities with self-storage and flex space warehouses. And again, the future land use showed some mixed uses there along with medium residential to the east. And then proposing light industrial. Concept plan that we have here, they complied with staff's comments. The village center recommendations are always to have parking, have more of the building up front instead of parking. So they did, they did come forward with that. It's a nice, nice site. It's going to offer a lot of good options for folks with sidewalk, come along with the super street improvements, and then sidewalk all the way down Garmin. Here with the landscape plan, you can see that there's a lot of trees currently that, what I was talking about earlier down the south and east of the site that will remain. So it's going to be more than a 50-foot required buffer of mature trees that are there. And then these areas where you don't have trees, just on the pictures, kind of the filled type area, that's, that'll be required to be planted to the 50-foot landscape buffer requirements. And it's 25 here along the street and up here. Onto the architecturals, we have got, this is the, the main, the three-story building that you're going to see mainly. And that's mostly brick on the front and the sides. It's got a mixture of brick and ethos and some metal, finished metal in the rear and side elevations. And as we're talking about, the site's located with an Old Monroe Village. And the mixture of uses coinciding with town's comprehensive plans, staff support requests, because it is adding the business commercial component that helps promote economic development. And then it follows the village center overlay recommendations by including that, that mixture of industry, commercial, and office uses. All of our review agencies were involved and they provided feedback. They'll continue to provide feedback. If this goes through to town council for ultimate approval, they return with a construction plan document that's more detailed. And they will have to abide by all agencies where they get approval to start building. During the 25th, well, prior to the community meeting, there were some concerns about crime that was expressed to staff. And the applicant in Union County Sheriff's Division did review some nearby self-storage facilities. They did not find any increased rates of crime or cause of service to these type of facilities. So we just wanted to bring that up. That was, that did get brought up again at the community meeting on January 25th. That was held. Six citizens participated. It was mainly the folks who abut the property, who are surrounding it. Their concerns, obviously, with water, stormwater runoff, the visual impacts and the road improvement impacts. And then the crime that I just mentioned. And I thought the applicant addressed those pretty well by, they pulled the building up closer to the street. And they are keeping the tree safe as well as doing the 50-foot required buffering. And they did listen to some of the requests of the neighbors on particular species of plants that they wanted. Going back to staff's recommendation of approval and then promoting the goals of comp plan. And we talked about the economic development, improving infrastructure. We do find it reasonable request. And this will conclude my presentation. This is all the, the conditions that would go with the project. Forgot to mention, there was not any outdoor storage considered. And, but I'm here to answer any questions. We do have Mason Grayson, Mark with Land Design, and then Darren Sutton with, he's the applicant with Garmin Ventures. And I can also read any, we've got public comments as well. I think Brandy may be helping chime in on some of those, but.
Yes, sir. So we'll turn it over to Mason and Mark with Land Design. And then following that, we will read the public comments received today.
Guys, thank you. Obviously, Matt, appreciate the introduction.
Matt, are you sharing your screen of the presentation or am I supposed to be doing? I could do either one. I think you're allowed to share yours as well. No, that says I can't. Okay, all right. I've got you.
Matt, you dropped off.
Okay. Okay, let me start sharing here.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
They introduced Mark Kime.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. There we go. Can I see it? Just. Hold on a second. All right. You're fine. I'll pull it up on my end just in case.
So I'll take this opportunity while they're trying to get the screen up, Madam Chair, if that's okay with you, just to discuss quickly the, the protocols around state law and COVID and virtual meetings.
There you go, Mark. Yep. Can you all see that? Brandy, if you want to finish your thought real quick before I get.
Sure. So just wanted to share with those in attendance tonight that we are receiving public comment in written format. Staff will read that. And if you were not able to get your public comment in today, you do still have until 5:00 PM tomorrow. We will read the public comment before the vote on Thursday's meeting at 6:00 PM. All the links to the meetings are located on our website as well, as well as the agenda packet. And then again, this planning board meeting is a recommendation that goes to town council for a final vote. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Brandy. Thank you for the presentation, Matt. My name is Mark Kime. I'm a landscape architect with Land Design in Charlotte. Mason is the civil engineer for this project, also with Plan Design. We're here on behalf of Garmin Road Ventures LLC to present the Garmin Storage Project, which matches Ren Thro. I'll try not to repeat too much of the information that he provided. But the site is located along Old Monroe Road and right across the street from the intersection with South Fork Road. Garmin is currently a private drive that with this project, we would actually improve to a 55-foot public right-of-way and eating all that right-of-way will come out of the, the total acreage for the site that we are proposing. As Matt alluded to, this is largely surrounded by SF1 and is currently zoned SF1 with a request to rezone to a light industrial zoning district. The reason for making this request is we feel this type of use with the future road improvements that are going to be going on along Old Monroe Road with the super street. This is the kind of, the commercial use, I believe, is the town is looking for in this area of the town. This is the Old Monroe Future, Old Monroe Village Future Land Use Map. And as Matt noted, we're on the edge of the village center overlay here, our site here, pressed up against the Creekside Bible Church here along the Old Monroe Road frontage, medium-density residential planned to the south and east. And the dark red is the village center overlay. So this is the site plan that Matt shared. Here again, we are improving Garmin to a 55-foot road section. We'd have three full movement access points off of Garmin. One access point for each one of the three buildings proposed. As you can see, along Old Monroe, this is showing the future roadway improvements with the super street section with the median that would restrict any full movement access anywhere on to Old Monroe. This access point here would be a right-in, right-out. There would be a leftover to get into the site from the northbound traffic. We also would have to add right-turn lanes to turn onto Garmin as well as turning into the right-in, right-out location. So the building that's up closest to the street is intended to be a three-story self-storage facility. There's just a small office component which serves the self-storage facility. This is a facility where you drive in and there'd be a lift here that'll let you access internally the difference of storage units on the different levels of the building. The all total, that's going to total about 90,000 square feet, give or take. The two buildings in the back would both be single-story buildings. All total about 30,000 square feet each, and these will offer up office up front with a mix of warehouse and or flex space, depending on what the total tenant's going to be. We have a large maneuvering space in the rear of each of these buildings, which would allow large oversized trucks to come in and provide access, drop off and leave. And then we'd have the 50-foot landscape buffer, which, as Matt pointed out, is up to about this point. We would supplement the additional buffer length with enough plantings to provide a visual screen with the residential homes to the south and east, as well as the landscaping along with Garmin and our frontage. There is a 10-foot multi-use trail that would go along out front as part of the super street improvements. These are the renderings that Matt showed. I'm just going to zoom in on this here a little bit. Again, brick veneer, metal paneling on the side. It'll have architectural metal coping along the top. And then we'd carry this same type of style throughout all three buildings here. Glass fronters on these buildings in the back. And again, we're going to add some landscaping here. We've discussed a berm elements. Obviously, we don't want to obstruct the view, but putting this on the prominent corner here, we don't think that's going to be an issue. I know it was something that came up in our community meetings, just talking about the view from neighbors across the street. And then a second second view here. This is a street view from Garmin here entering the site. Again, just a different view. So I am here as well as Mason and Darren and Dean Harold to answer any questions you might have. I know there was the issue about security brought up, and I thank you for that information from the fire, or from the police chief. Another, another thing that we will have with these facilities is these will have 24/7 cameras as well as, you know, regular policing. So we're here for any questions you might have.
I do. So Mark, my name is Chris McGuire. One of the things that I think will work really well, reading through the details here, what brings on the theft and the issues is outdoor storage. And by not having that as a component of this build, that is going to save everybody a significant amount of aggravation. And not just on the storage or theft part, but the look of the site. If you go through and you go up, up and down Unionville and Indian Trail Road, there are several outdoor storage areas. Some are kept better than others, but you know, that they're a constant issue with the sheriff, with our local sheriffs. And it's, you know, somebody, how many codes are given out to the occupants and who's getting in? Everything's on camera, but things are still missing or damaged or vandalized. And so I think, you know, that's 99% of that's happening on the outdoor storage component. RVs getting broken into, all kinds of things going on, even with barbed wire and crazy fencing. So that's a good call. I hope that it sticks to that. Indoor storage only, indoor, you know, light industrial only. And that's, I think that's going to save, save face for operations and crime and mischief.
Yeah, we would agree.
Hey, this is Joe. What's the timing with the super street you mentioned of when you guys are actually completing the build? Like, will it happen, would it occur before the super street is finished or not?
I believe the bill will actually, well, I'm not exactly sure on the timing of the bill, given the current climate and what's happening in Union County. Brandy, I don't know if you can speak to the timing of the super street? I know I've heard a couple of different things of when that's going to be implemented.
Right. So right now, the super street is undergoing right-of-way acquisition. They're starting from Stallins jurisdiction and moving on down. Our Director of Engineering is on the line. So Todd, correct me if I get anything wrong here. They're looking at at least 18 months to two years for the right-of-way acquisition, simply because there's over 100 property owners to deal with. Really depends on, you know, how easy and smooth that process goes. So it's really, you know, there's, there's a sewer capacity issue going on, and it's really hard to gauge which will come first. But NC DOT and the town engineer as well will make sure that whatever the timing is, that those improvements are, take place as appropriate.
Yeah, I'll just chime in. This is Todd, the Director of Engineering from the town. She's, Brandy is correct. It's going to be, they're going to start our section. If you don't know, planning board, there's two sections involved. There's Stallins, and then there's us. And, and so they're still working on Stallins right now. They freed up right-of-way position for their section. And they're trying to slowly, as funding allows, try to move forward with our section in the fall. And so right well, starting to fall, so you're, you're talking two falls from now, possibly three. It's going to help, you know, again, how quick the right-of-way goes. So you're talking about another five or six years before you see that road operational. So this, this building, I would assume would be done regardless of the sewer issues before then.
Yeah, I would agree with that, Todd, that if, if it's five to six years out, then yes, I would assume that these buildings will be complete before that time.
Thank you, Todd. There's no further questions at this time. Chairman Fielding, I'd like to start with the public comment that we've received for this item.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so the first we have is we, we have seen many changes throughout the years in Indian Trail. We're not in favor of this newly proposed development as it will completely change the dynamics of our predominantly residential area. However, we do understand that this rezoning will likely take place. Therefore, we would strongly urge the town of Indian Trail to attentively listen to the concerns of the neighboring landowners. One of our major, major concerns with this proposal is the lack of security around the facilities for numerous reasons. As we understand it, these office-front warehouse buildings will be leased to skilled trade labor-type businesses like plumbers, electricians, landscapers, and so forth. While we've been told that no outside storage will be allowed, we find it hard to believe that commercial vehicles will not be left on-site overnight. Due to the nature of these businesses, tools and other valuables will be left in these vehicles, which could draw the attention of would-be criminals to the area. Even more concerning is the open parking area where random vehicles could freely float in and out of, at multiple access points. It's easy to see how this could facilitate other criminal activity, especially during all hours of the night. We highly recommend that Garmin or Adventures be required to secure the warehouse areas with an appropriate style fence and gates system. The fence would have an attractive appearance like a black wrought iron look that would not resemble galvanized tiling. By installing the fence and gates, it would help detour potential criminal activity in the area caused by this development, as well as secure the property of the business owners. Any type of obstacle or security measure that can be implemented will help this potential issue and should strongly be supported by the town. That's from Alex and Mary Winn Roll Letter. Second public comment received is from Barbara Hounds. And she says, "If you insist on adding storage in businesses in our home's front door, please put a high fence around it at least eight to 12 feet high and razor wire around the top for the people who live here. Safety. This seems to be a great place for thieves." And the third comment is, "We are writing regarding the proposed rezoning of parcel 0711009 at the corner of Garmin Road and Old Monroe Road. This proposal would change the property from an existing single-family residential to a conditional light industrial rezoning. Our family currently lives and owns the property at 4849 Old Monroe Road. We are located across the street and can see clearly the property under consideration from the front of our home. As the Indian Trail area is undergoing major developments, we are aware that change is unavoidable. We attended the previous virtual Zoom meeting that discussed this specific proposal to fully understand what this project is and how it could potentially affect us. At this time, we would like to go on record as opposing this proposal. By changing the zoning and bringing commercial endeavors closer to longstanding Indian Trail homes, the planning board unequivocally changed the lives of all the residents in this area. One, one area of concern for residents would potentially be more traffic issues, even with the planned NC DOT changes for Old Monroe Road. The environmental assessment published for this project documents that 57% of accidents that occur in the project zone involve rear-end collisions. It is reasonable to expect the addition of another access point directly on Old Monroe Road in close proximity to Garmin Road and a residential driveway would increase the likelihood of rear-end collisions. More accidents in this area will clearly affect residents. Safety is the other area of potential impact. If the planning board looks to approve this proposal, we're looking at minimum for consideration and protection of the residence, nearby residents. Specifically, we would ask that the developer, Garmin Road Ventures, be required to provide controlled access on and off the property 24 hours daily. Although these types of storage units would be accessible from the inside of the building and no outdoor storage is permitted, this still leaves an unattended parking lot near many residential homes. In looking at the proposed plans, the parking lot would have multiple access points, which could easily become a magnet for various types of criminal activity, including the sale and distribution of illegal substances. As residents, we do not feel it is unreasonable to ask the developer to provide an aesthetically attractive fence or gate that could serve as a deterrent to potential criminal activity that would not necessarily be related to the storage units on-site. In short, if the residents were asked to accept the construction, traffic, and overall change this type of business will bring, then it's reasonable that the developer should accommodate a logical request to dissuade potential criminal activity that it could affect those nearby neighbors. As residents, we are asking that the planning board treat its citizens and neighbors fairly and transparently as they look to develop our town. If our citizens' interests and safety are considered and protected along with the developers' business interests, then it will be a fair compromise for all involved. Respectfully, Denise and Brian Winn.
I have one more. Oh, go ahead.
All right, I've got one more. Excuse me, Matt. So number four. My name is Ray B. Kilo. I live at 5125 Old Monroe Road, Indian Trail, North Carolina. I own property directly across the road from the subject parcel for which the zoning request is being made. While we knew that it was inevitable that the parcel would be developed, we were caught off-guard with the current proposed use. I would respectfully request that the planning board consider the following suggestions. My biggest concern are the areas of security, safe ingress and egress, and unsiteliness. Please understand that heretofore, this is a relatively quiet, peaceful neighborhood with property ownership dating back many years. With the proposed use, there would be 24/7 activity. I know of no other facility that has the combined self-storage, warehouse, and office use exactly like this in the general area. The potential for criminal activity in the outside areas is of great concern. To prevent such activity, the east or back outside area should be fenced and gated with suitable fencing. If plumbing and other trades park their vehicles behind the two office/warehouse buildings, they could be targets for theft from them. These thefts could bleed into the existing residential areas. Also, this area with multiple ingress and egress would be an ideal location for criminal selling of drugs, so on, activity. We strongly encourage that suitable fencing and gating be a condition. Within the existing Old Monroe Road design, the proposed road connection would present problems with ingress/egress. The proximity to the heavily-used South Fork Road would present a problem when exiting the proposed facility to the west or entrance from the east, particularly with a tractor-trailer rig. From 4:00 PM and the next two hours, I have seen cars and trucks lined up on South Fork Road, 10 or more deep, waiting to make a left turn onto Old Monroe Road. When an opening does occur, the vehicles must accelerate, make an accelerated entrance into Monroe Road. As close as the South Fork intersection is to the proposed entrance and exit onto Monroe Road from the property, traffic safety would be compromised. This would be a very unsafe traffic area. I would request that the connection to Monroe Road be eliminated. This would eliminate the multiple ingress and egress security problems and prevent many accidents. We have been assured that no outside storage would be permitted. Hopefully, that will be enforced. Additionally, the good, medium-height, closely-planted tree and shrubbery buffer should be required around the property to include the Old Monroe side. I would like to thank the planning board for hearing our concerns. Respectfully submitted, Ray B. Kilo/PE. And then Matt has one more for us.
Hello again. Yes, this is from Ralph Kilo. The proposed rezoning of 11 acres on Old Monroe Road in Indian Trail, North Carolina, that is located at the southeast corner where Old Monroe and Garmin Road intersect. I own property across the road, and it's under consideration for, I own property across the road from the property that is under consideration for rezoning. My property consists of eight acres. It's identified as 4933 Old Monroe Road, and my property line is approximately 400 feet from the property line of the property that is under consideration for rezoning. I participated in the recent Zoom, Zoom meeting, at which time the current property owner and architect explained the proposed plans for the property. I personally have seen changes that have taken place in Indian Trail area since the early 1940s. There are a number of factors that I've caught, that have caused these changes, and Indian Trail has been, has been forced to deal with them. There are a number of factors that I've caught, that have caused these changes, and Indian Trail has been, has been forced to deal with them. We would all be naive to think things would or should stay the way they were years ago. However, when the town's council is, when the town council is deciding these issues, I believe they should keep a balance between the changes that need to be made and protecting the property owners affected by those changes. That is a point of this letter. Uh, there is no denying by anyone that Indian Trail, like many other neighboring towns, has issues with illegal substances. And public records will show that property owners along this section of Old Monroe Road have personally had to deal with them. It is because of the history of issues with illegal substances in the area that are, that we are very concerned about anything being brought in that would possibly create this type of situation again. After listening to the plans proposed by the current property owner and the architect, we are extremely concerned that without a controlled access to the property, especially at night, because it will have multiple points of access, it would or could create a situation that would be conducive to serve as a place for the sale of illegal substances and or other various types of criminal activity beyond just breaking and entering. We, we do not believe we're in any way overreacting to this potential future problem. And, um, and on this basis, that one of the several property owners along this section of Old Monroe, I'm asking you to require a controlled access to the property at all times of day if you approve the rezoning for the proposed use. And he says, if you have any questions or want to respond, please contact me through, and we've got his email. And that concludes that public comment.
Thank you, Matt. Chairman, we'll turn it over to the board for questions.
I have a question.
Larry?
Yeah, uh, somebody said Chris. Okay, so I have two questions around traffic and one kind of follows on to the question from the, uh, the public comments here from from, um, the street across there, South Fork, and how that ties into Monroe Road with Garmin and the new proposed widening of Garmin on this section we're seeing on the screen. Again, help me understand how that intersection will look, uh, at the completion of this development.
You're saying prior to the super.
Well, I mean, once it would be completed, what does that intersection look like? I can see the drawing, but yeah, at the completion of this development, that intersection for Garmin, South Fork and Old Monroe, what would that look like?
So you'd have just a left over here that would be, I would assume would be signalized. And then this would be a left over here to go on the South Fork. It would not be a full movement intersection. Uh, you'd have a right turn lane coming southbound on Old Monroe to get on the Garmin. And then another southbound right turn lane for this right in, right out access. This, uh, this will be immediate here. So again, there wouldn't be any full movement northbound, any traffic to want to leave here and go northbound would have to come down and do a U-turn. Very similar to what you're seeing on seventy four, uh, currently being implemented.
So if I was coming south on Old Monroe and I had to turn onto South Fork, how would I go? Is that with that spaces in between those two bit barriers?
Uh, here, yes, this would be another leftover, uh, to get on the South Fork.
And is that a controlled traffic light?
Uh, Todd, I'm not exactly sure if that's going to be a signalized leftover or not.
Uh, I don't believe that's going to be signalized at all.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that one was a signalized intersection for NCDOT.
No, well, you know, I'll just say, I mean, I travel that road quite often and it's, it's already a real challenge with the, uh, the traffic that tries to come out from South Fork, that's trying to make left or going south on Old Charlotte. So if that lane that we just talked about, uh, coming off an Old Charlotte, um, and trying to turn left onto South Fork, and that's not controlled by a light, I, I'm very concerned about that. And then you have the normal traffic heading south on Old Charlotte that would turn right into Garmin with the new proposed. That would, okay. And then I guess going north on Charlotte, Old Charlotte, you've got another divider that it looks like it turns left onto Garmin. Is that what that's for? Yes, right there. And that one also, you don't know if it's controlled by a light?
It, it is not, no.
Okay, well, I've got two concerns on those. I think that's, that's a real challenge. Um, is the proposed Old Charlotte changes, Superhighway, whatever we're calling it, is that lane going north and south, the newer's, whatever that is, is that two lanes?
Yes, it's, so four lanes total. It's two lanes north, two lanes south.
So both of those left turns, the one coming south, turning into South Fork, the one going north, turning left onto Garmin, are going to cross two lanes of traffic with a light?
Yes, uh, to, to give you an idea of what it's really going to look like is the literal Independence Boulevard right now, uh, the sections of the existing that, that, that is exactly the section that would be going in. To give you an idea.
All right, I have a second question. All right, well, that concerns me greatly. I travel seventy four also, which is also a, a real challenge. I'm not familiar with Garmin. I know where it is there, but what, what does Garmin go down to? Uh, past this proposed development here, is that feed into something else, Garmin Road?
Uh, right now, it would just be stuck to this property at the back. There are no, uh, improvements beyond where Garmin is going long term that I know of. Uh, we're just bringing it up to a public right of way standard.
So it would be a dead end street?
It is a dead end street and it will continue to be a dead end street.
Uh, and Mr.
Those were my questions.
Sorry, can I add to your, your question there? So the super street has obviously been in the works, uh, with NCDOT for a very long time. Uh, and NCDOT bases their improvements. Obviously, we, we don't, this is the improvements that NCDOT is proposing based on traffic analysis and existing things, all the issues that you're saying, uh, and, and this is what they propose. This is their, their solution to the problem to keep traffic moving. So just to give you an idea that it is an NCDOT studied uh, design, and that's what's been proposed.
Yeah, well, well, thank you for that. I do deal with NCDOT on a matter for my own age away, and their proposed solution isn't very good for that either. Yeah, but I'll just leave it. I'm very concerned about that intersection. I'm very concerned about that intersection.
Understood.
I can, uh, comment, uh, and piggyback Larry's concern. If you go down seventy four and you're making these two lane and some are single lane U-turns, they're all controlled. Every one of them are controlled intersections. Okay, every, everyone, and it may, anybody thinks or sees something different than what I'm seeing. I drive it every day. And there is some form of traffic light, every one of those U-turns. So I'm hoping that they would implement that here, um, especially off of the, um, South Fork Road accessibility. Cause that gets really busy. So that's just my, my, my two cents on that and what, what I understand.
Yeah, I mean logically, we would agree with you and just crossing two lanes of traffic. I live in Union County too, so I'm very familiar with all the, the U-turns and the bulbs. And I would think that this would be something that would be definitely revisited to signalize, uh, that. But that's something we would have to take up with DOT, um, as far as that discussion.
Can we bridge over into the security, security, uh, effect, um, on the property? Um, there's going to be probably not less than a dozen cameras. I can just imagine. That's actually, uh, a pretty effective deterrent. Um, it gives something for law enforcement to refer to when there's activity. Uh, same thing happening over, say, example, with what they just have done over at the Walmart in Indian Trail. Uh, there are no thirty five cameras over there. It's unbelievable what they're able to, uh, pick up traffic study. You know, just the population, what's coming and going and, and staying overnight in that parking lot. Uh, interesting, um, series of events. So can you elaborate on, you know, looking at our, our, our citizens and their concerns in regards to security and fencing?
Well, I think the elimination of the outdoor storage component, along with the camera security, um, we feel is, is a strong enough deterrent that this wouldn't have to be one hundred percent fenced. Uh, especially the, the self-storage facilities, these types of facilities that we have in Charlotte, um, are typically not gated, uh, that they're pretty much drive up and, again, that's all internal access. Uh, there's no external storage component to it. So I, I think that's just where we stand as far as not needing a gated deterrent.
So if I can just, um, look at that intersection that Laurie was just talking about. If you're coming, uh, down South Fork to Old Monroe and you want to make a left, how do you do that? With that meeting there?
You'll have to turn right and then you'll, the next opportunity, there's a bulb that you can make a U-turn. It will be the, will be your option to go southbound. They're gonna, the idea with the super street is to restrict all full movement access uh, along Old Monroe Road, just like, very similar to what we have on seventy four.
Okay, so I'm visualizing it where? By the Dollar Tree?
Uh, I'm not exactly sure where they have them.
Make a U-turn there?
Yeah, that's about right. Meg, that's, that's pretty close. If it's just before the Dollar Tree, that's probably pretty accurate.
Cause that, there are times when you go by that, that street and Laurie was just talking about. There can be ten cars lined up, uh, on South Fork. And even if half of them are, are wanting to go left, making them go right and then do a U-turn is going to be challenging.
So South Fork is that, and I use it all the time. It's that cut through that allows you to avoid the intersection of Indian Trail Road. We use it all the time, right? So what's gonna, what's gonna happen here is people are gonna go, oh, heck no, I'm not taking a right to take a left, you know? And so that's gonna shift and change that traffic pattern. And it's gonna push cars, uh, traffic back to Indian Trail Road.
Back to the intersection?
Back to the intersection of Indian Trail and Old Monroe Road. I can already see that taking place. Cause this is actually, you know, we know South, South Fork is a shortcut, a quote unquote, right, breakover from Indian Trail Road. To, to get, to get up there and hopefully the traffic isn't all that bad. And hopefully I can get out quick and make my left and that all goes away. And so we know that's gonna push back toward Indian Trail Road. That's where that left turn is gonna be made. And I'm guessing, I haven't seen the, the master plan of that super street section, but there have to be some pretty significant changes there.
Good, good points, Chris.
But I think, I think most of those things are things that we can't really control, um, with that traffic. It's gonna happen. Um, but I think some of the things that we can control, I'll suggest, is like the many of the, um, uh, residents around suggested maybe, I, I think it's a good proposal to have the fencing around the facility though.
Yeah, I'm gonna piggyback off of what everybody else said. I think definitely don't see how that's gonna work. I mean, I understand what Joe just said, that, that you can't control it, but, uh, the traffic, but it's just like, why do we wanna? If we already know that there's gonna be a problem, why do we want to add to it? How can we figure out a better way to allow traffic to flow, given the current situation? You're talking about like maybe ten years, eight to ten years before, I don't know how, um, these roads are going to work, but you talk about, that's gonna be a long project. Like eight to ten years before the streets are widened and things like that. And, um, I guess my concern is like how figuring out a, a, a better way that we could still have this property here with the security with all the residents' concerns. But also with the fact that we don't want to add additional issues to the traffic because it makes no sense. It's not, it's, it's, if this is a business, you want people to, to be attracted to the business. If they have trouble getting in there and they're gonna find another storage unit and then it's gonna hurt your business. So, um, you wanna, I guess, I guess, think about how we can figure out a better way to get people in and out without piling up traffic. Now, I know it's probably not gonna be a high business areas. I'm assuming that, right? Mark, it's not gonna be something that people are gonna be coming in and out constantly.
Right, correct.
Cause it's just a storage unit. It's, you might have like five, you know, one or two cars come by. But then the times where you might have somebody come by, that might be doing a high traffic area, I guess that would be something we could figure out.
Yeah, cause I guess if you contrast that with, let's just say, this was a residential area that wanted to build here. Can you imagine the number of cars in and out?
Yes, yes.
Less from that aspect, I think.
Right, right.
You'll have a rush hour hit for those that are working, uh, in, in the two back, single story buildings. That's what I imagine, you know, just trying to get out and they have to go right. Like a U-turn to go left to go back into, uh, back into the Charlotte, Charlotte region. So that's your peak, right? You're gonna have a morning and probably a, a late afternoon, uh, getting to work and leaving. Uh, for those, what are there? Probably, I'm looking at occupancy. I know that it can be subdivided or can be partitioned, uh, often in certain ways. Are we talking ten, fifteen, twenty businesses? What's the approximate?
Mark, I can speak to that. I mean, we, we had, our plan was to have two to three businesses in each building. Um, you know, and that's eight, uh, twelve thousand square foot users.
Okay.
What our intent was, obviously, uh, larger professional businesses is what we're trying to bring to the area and, uh, that's kind of what our, um, intent is with this. There's, uh, not a lot of class, I call it class A flex space in the area and that's what we're wanting to bring to the area.
Yeah, the only other that I know of is behind the post office at Indian Trail and then back, uh, off of what would be was that Wesley Chapel, uh, behind the QT, there's a, there's a, a can, it's a cannon drive, the U, the U-turn of Cannon Drive is some established businesses back there and some flex spaces. There aren't very many.
Correct.
And that thing is a great, I, I think it's a great location. It's just the fact that I wish it was a way you can do it where it's, because at least those places that you named, there's other ways to get out without being on the main. You know, like, cause there's no way to get out, you know, like that's my only concern. It's just how the movement, you know, of getting in and out of those facilities.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we would prefer, obviously, if the super street was already designed, obviously to have a stoplight there and things like that, uh, at that intersection. But unfortunately, you know, it's, it's, it's not up to us. I wish it was. It would be, be better for us. Dean, you may want to speak up to that as well.
Yes, so I guess you can kind of look at it as, uh, can you hear me there?
Yes, yes.
So I guess you kind of look at it as, this is DOT's design. And basically you could kind of consider whether this facility was here or not. That's the way the intersection is going to be. So we have to kind of take the, what we've been given here by DOT. I think we're absolutely right. I would like to see a signalization there, even if we keep the, the design the way it is. And of course, at one time, as we remember, there was a full movement red light there, which I, I wish that they just left it. But, um, but this is what we've got from them. And that's kind of what we were, we're stuck with. Uh, we will probably be built and finished before all this gets implemented. I know the town's putting funds into the street as well as DOT to, to speed this up. But it's what we've got. Um, and we also considered, I know the comment was made, could you imagine if this was residential? Well, that's why we didn't even consider residential because of the traffic count. But if it can't be residential, the only thing we got really left is some commercial, uh, which is a tremendously less traffic count than the residential. I also like to kind of, just go back to the security part of it just a, a moment. The, um, the comment about the security cameras is right, that there'll be a, a minimum of four cameras to each building, all corners. As far as fencing goes, it is a self-contained, the front building is a self-contained climate-controlled storage. So we don't have a compound that's storing boats or, or campers or anything like that. And so the building itself is secured by fob. You have to have a fob to get in. And as far as the, the flex space goes, um, cameras are the best deterrent. We, we want to make sure they're the latest and greatest technology and they're visible. It, it would be hard to completely fence in these buildings with a gate. And here's kind of why. Um, a gate is mechanical and gates break down all the time. Especially something very susceptible to a gate is lightning. Seems like every time it lightens, these mechanics on these gates break down. So if you could only imagine the trucks trying to get in, whether it's service trucks, delivery trucks, or trying to get in from Old Monroe Road and then the gates are shut down, then you're gonna have a traffic jam backing up on the old Charlotte Highway out there. As a concession, what we would do is on the back of the, in the, in the sides of the flex space, we would put a, a chain-linked uh, black vinyl fence up. But it, you know, it's just a deterrent from somebody coming through the woods really to get into the site. Or if there is someone back there causing some trouble, it would be a deterrent where they couldn't, couldn't run to the woods. You know, they'd have to come out toward Garmin Road and, and you know, that would be where the police would be waiting. But to completely fence this compound in and gated, I, I, I just don't see how that can be done.
Any other questions from the board?
I can just, uh, it's not a security issue so much, it is, as it is a debris issue. We know that these businesses are gonna have dumpsters. And I can tell you just from experience, they are gonna get abused, okay? So we know that from cameras to locking the, locking the receptacles, a lot of, a lot of property uh occupants are now locking their dumpsters. And you know, I don't know how that works with pickup, uh, you know, when the dump, when the trucks come at three in the morning to unload the, the debris. But um, what, what's your, what's your vision there as far as, you know, the, the, just those extracurricular um, events happening?
Yeah, so the dumpster areas would be, um, they would be walled and gated. Uh, the dumpsters would be much like you would see on any kind of a um, flex space site or even like a tech apartment site. The dumpsters will be enclosed with gates. That also, you know, you're gonna have some deliveries and those deliveries are gonna be on pallets. So we're actually gonna have a pallet storage facility also that's gated.
So, sounds great.
No outside storage whatsoever. It, it's just so you've got a heating and air um, business there, which they have their um, components delivered on pallets. It would be inside storage only. The pallets tend to build up inside, so it will be a pallet facility gated for that storage. Regular pickup times, just as, as the trash would be. And so as far as blowing trash, I see, I see what you're saying. I think we could commit to fence the back. In other words, where the parking lot ends at the trees. We would fence that and we would also fence the sides of the flex building businesses only. Um, I don't, to the back corners of the building. I do not want to take away from the architecture of the storage facility. It's a beautiful building, it's a beautiful facility, it's an expensive building. Um, so if we're, if we're, and, and, and um, you know, that facility would have a small dumpster. It's nothing like the commercial space would be. And, and it will also be boxed and gated. But if the, if it's in the wisdom of the planning board that they foresee a, a six-foot vinyl uh, black fence on the sides and the back of the flex space building, we'll be happy to do that.
You mean chain-linked thing?
I mean, sorry, chain-linked thing.
Yes.
That would be effective. That would be very effective, like you talked about the egress uh, breaking back into private property. You know, or coming from private property onto this site. And then, you know, taking a fence all the way around the perimeter, it's gonna look like our US Capitol. And I'm telling you, that's not attractive, it's not attractive at all.
Exactly.
Mr. Harold, if I may, for clarification, is that a black powder-coated chain-link fence?
Yes.
Yeah, do the powder-coated or, but give us the option of powder-coated or vinyl. But I, I certainly just don't wanna galvanize chain link. We want it to look professional and
Black or green in color, probably.
Yeah, yeah, architectural green.
Yes.
That's great, that's gonna help. You know, and again, with the tree line there, um, that's a deterrent in and of its own. And when you're adding that additional security perimeter or half perimeter of fencing, again, it's ways in and ways out. And that's, that's important.
And, and we'll provide an exhibit of that, Brandy. I know we can't do it here, but we'll, we'll provide an acceptable exhibit that um, for our conversation here.
Thank you, sir. Are you okay with us adding that as a condition?
Yes.
Thank you.
Brandy, I had a question.
I had a question about the condition. What are you gonna add? You said the fence, what kinda condition you're adding?
So according to my notes, we have a six, six-foot black or green powder-coated chain-link fence.
Okay.
For the fencing behind um, the flex spaces where the park, lot and trees meet and then the sides of the flex building.
Okay, gotcha.
Hey, Brandy, this is Larry, I had a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So there was, was there a traffic uh, study of some sort that was done based on a number of storage units? How many storage units are we talking about?
Cur- currently, we, we do not have the um, layout complete on the storage. We're still obviously working through that process, but um, I know, and Mark, you may be able to speak to this. I know that the traffic uh, generally has been very low traffic counts on conditioned storage space. A lot of people uh, in the conditioned spaces sometimes don't even go one time a month to their spaces once they're marking.
Yeah, the proposed use um, really didn't trigger a, a full traffic study. We did consult DOT, which is how we came up with the, the right turn lane improvements. Uh, but that was all that was recommended, based on the uh, the low user count, as far as daily trips.
So if I was uh, using the facility, are those spaces in front of the building where I would pull up and then unload my, my um goods based on whatever building I was running? Uh, there, you, in that little loading area in the back, uh, is where you would bring your rental truck or truck or car, whichever. Uh, you would enter the facility and depending on what unit you actually have purchased or leased, you would either walk up the stairs or take the elevator, the lift to that floor into your unit, inside the space. And I'm sorry, what are the other two buildings? Are those commercial?
Either single-story warehouse flex space that Darren was mentioning. We probably looked to break that up into two or three tenants.
Okay, anything else from the board? Well, we thank you very much for coming in and talking with us and for being so helpful and listening to our concerns.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen. Really appreciate it.
Brandy, I think we can go on to the next, the next present, presentation.
Yes, ma'am, I'll turn it over to Matt Ward, our senior planner.
Sorry about that, I had to unmute myself. Can everyone see this screen here? Glenn Hurst, CZ twenty twenty zero 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 one, one zero?
Matt, we cannot see your screen right now.
Okay. Sharing screen. Mark, I'm wondering if you um, stopped sharing yours, if it would allow me to share mine? Hmm. Yeah, I know, these uh
I think I stopped sharing mine.
Okay. For some reason, I hit the share screen, it's not working. Let's try. And that's stupid, yeah, that was wrong. Is the raised, the raised hand is working? I don't know why, let me try saying alt S and see if that works. Still nothing? Oh, that looks like something. Is everyone seeing this?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Brandy must have worked the magic. Thank you, Brandy.
Yeah, Matt, I'm sharing the screen for you, if you just let me know.
Okay, great, okay, great. Yeah, we'll just go through slowly with the slides. This is um, good evening, everyone, again. This is a conditional rezoning request. It's a rezoning case CZ twenty twenty dash zero one one zero. And the project name is Glenn Hurst. It's in, located in the sixty-six to sixty-eight hundred block of Potter Road. That's in the western line of Potter Road. And um, I don't know if you guys are seeing this on your screen, but you could go to the next slide, Brandy. So request to approximately rezone four point seven five acres. Currently, the zoning is within Union County. It's a residential R forty, so that's R forty for Union County. One house per forty thousand square feet, a lot of area. The proposed zoning here is a conditional zoning for Indian Trail. They would have, they have a, a annexation case that's, that coincides with this conditional zoning. So the proposed zoning is conditional zoning, single-family residential district CZ SF four. Uh, we had the applicant, Robert Bennett, with Stanley Martin Homes. And uh, the intent would be to combine all nine parcels and then that would allow the hundred and one single-family homes to be developed. Going into the project details, uh, next slide is two point four four dwelling units per acre. For this project, two point eight nine acres were required for open space and six point nine seven acres were provided. Six point nine one acres required for tree save and they provided seven point six four. Of course, each home will meet the UDO parking requirements. And um, as we've worked through the process, the applicant has put in a pocket park as well as a, a mandarin concrete pathway that's in the natural area. And they initially started with one sixteen homes and they're down to one oh one after some conversations with neighboring communities. Going on, this is the aerial, uh, the nine parcels that we talked about. You can see here, I don't know if everyone's seen my mouse, highlighting the screen. The concept plan does illustrate for the, the perimeter of the project. These are, well, let me talk about these existing site pictures. So the project will be over here to the left. This is Potter Road, looking north. And this is Potter's Creek Estates, where the south part of the, the development will come into play. Gene Place Court, you see here, this will be an extension of that road into the development. This is existing home that will obviously be removed. We're looking now south along Potter Road, project's gonna be on your right. As far as existing zoning, you do have mostly, um, you know, low to medium residential. Uh, you've got three jurisdictions coming together here, Indian Trail, Union County and Weddington. And these are the respective zoning districts for those areas. Future land use here is still residential, anywhere from low to medium. This is all considered low, this is medium residential here in the darker orange. And this is talking about a little bit more description of the area. Nine of the partially wooded parcels totaling forty one point seven five acres to, to allow construction of the hundred and one single-family detached homes. And we already went over the land uses and zoning. This is the actual concept plan that you can see, I hope everyone can see this. The hundred and one units or lots. And then you've got the pocket park here that's shown towards the north. As well as the, the trail that's gonna be going through the tree save area. Also here on the conceptual, conceptual landscape plan, they have a twenty-five-foot deeded restricted buffer. They'll go around the, this is the perimeter of the site and the rest of the site on the Indian Trail's landscape and lighting plan standards. Architectural renderings provided by Stanley Martin. Do show buildings, majority brick or stone or of the quality, uh, party siding. There's very, varied colors, as you can see. Additional features, large parks, garages, um, wall trim and then extending beyond the windows. You can see some interesting roof, uh, roof pitches, wall planes and different window types. Again, here's the traffic impact analysis that um, we can all discuss more. But basically, it's a, a north and southbound turn lane for this area with the, with storage prepared or recommended. We feel as staff that, you know, with this development, helping strengthen existing subdivisions and improve infrastructure in that area that they are being consistent with the village plan and meaning the intent of the town's comprehensive plan. There's existing low, but also medium-density subdivisions here. And by them adding this medium-density subdivision as described in the, as recommendations, we feel it's compatible and would, would be a good addition to the area. As we all, always required, every project, all the internal and external review agencies provide a feedback and they'll continue to do that through the site plan process. We do, uh, they do have water that's accessible on Potter Road. Sewer will have to be um, developed through easements. A sewer extension from the Brookhaven pump station will be involved. And then any existing onsite stuff will have to be properly dealt with. Uh, we did have a community meeting back in December last year. Ten citizens attended at town hall and forty-four citizens participated through the Zoom meeting. The major concerns were density, traffic and overcrowding of our schools. I can discuss a little bit about traffic improvements. Will include, you know, the left and right turn storage and taper too for, for storage backing up. It'll be widened to accommodate that, to accommodate that Potter Road will. And then the school study, that yielded seventy-three school-aged children for a future school year, twenty thirty through twenty thirty-one. And you know, as, as I mentioned earlier, they, the applicant went back to the drawing board. They went from one sixteen to one oh one lots. And they added the pocket park because of getting rid of, getting rid of the lot. So that helped um, make the project more valuable and in line with what we expect in terms of amenity and, and tree save. So as I mentioned earlier, the land use and housing goal, we, Seth Fils-Ack has said, they've been, they've met that and it's a reasonable request. We've uh, added conditions one through nine. The first four are pretty standard. This talks about the architectures that have been provided, their density, they're limited to that number, which is on the low and, kind of medium side of medium density. And also the town, the road improvements, they have to be in compliance with that. And then the pocket park, concrete, meandering, I might need to check my spelling on that. Trail through the large tree area and then the twenty-five-foot deed-restricted landscape buffer. Um, and that does conclude my presentation. It's um, Mason Gerson and, and Mark Kime again with Land Design. And then Bob Bennett with Stanley Martin Homes. So do you have any questions of them? We do have quite a bit of public comments that can be read. Randy and I'll be tag teaming that, so whenever we're ready, we can read those. And hopefully everyone saw the slides.
Yeah, I'm sorry, can I just ask one quick question? So this is, this property is, is it a, this is an Indian Trail or a Union County property, Indian Trail is?
Union County, they're requesting.
So they, they have requested Indian Trail takes of property.
Correct.
Okay, that's all, that's all.
Yeah, you're right, thank you.
Um, I noticed one comment that uh, there was a question as to why this wasn't done in Weddington. And the answer was that um, the, the developer couldn't provide the project product that Weddington was looking for. What um, what was that all about?
Um, that might be, I don't know, staff would be able to comment on that level. That could be something probably Mark or Mason or maybe even Mr. Bennett would care to expand on.
Yeah, that was, that was in the listing of the public um, questions and comment and answers. Number eighteen, actually.
Meg, I think it has a lot to do with the density. If we, if we go to the neighboring subdivisions, the density is very, very different than this subdivision.
I was wondering if it was density.
Yeah, I, I think that's probably Yeah, I, I think that's probably one of the primary concerns of, of what these other subdivisions, the environment that's created there, the space, the property. And I think that's probably, you know, and I, you know, I could be off on that and we'll hear comment or more information that I think you're looking for.
When you say intensity, you mean like more space, yeah, more spot plots. Well, could this, if that was a concern, not that I'm trying to knock out, you know, why we had, why they issued it to Indian Trail. But the thing is, there was, there's a property that's, I don't know the name of it, but it is under Weddington, I guess, the schools or whatever. But they, they don't have, I don't see it, I see it close. You know what I mean? Like I see the homes no different than they were normally building Indian Trail. So I'm just, you know, that's just my little two cents. I just don't see what they're talking about. Like, are they, are they not, they just don't, they just want them to be more spaces in between the homes or? What is this property? I guess we need to know that. Does this property that we're, we're looking into right now for us to, you know, to, to be on the Indian Trail jurisdiction or whatever? Or are we giving it enough space that it needs to be? So, I mean, are we giving it, are we giving it enough space? I don't know.
Sorry. Background noise, could everyone hearing? This, this area of Indian Trail obviously is our last stop. So with our comprehensive plan and our zoning rules, we do have a density that's a little bit higher built in than what you would say Union County or Weddington have. So they are meeting our requirements in terms of the, the the elements that they're requesting. They reduced the lots too, to be in more in line with the SF four, because they'd originally requested SF five. Probably they're correct. I think that was during the community meeting that Meg, I see your, that question. Someone I do remember them asking that and probably the, you know, I don't want to speak on behalf of the developer, of my applicant, but yes, probably town of Weddington would have been, it would have required less density. So that's therefore less lots.
Yeah, I guess. Sorry, I can add to it. I mean, it's exactly that. So Union County has, not to explain these donut hole properties that we, we addressed and approached Union County to begin with. But they're trying to not take control over these, what you call a donut hole property where they're just kind of plugged into certain areas of other municipalities and kind of left in the middle. So we know, obviously we looked into Weddington. But you know, the comprehensive plan for Indian Trail included these parcels and this parcel is like the last next stop. And yes, the density is not as, Indian Trail offers a more scenarios and more options for density for low, medium and high in those areas. And we're trying to align more with what we would actually be able to physically do. You know, fiscally, financially, and you know, just to make a better product. That, that was mainly the choice.
Does the developer want to make a presentation too, or will we just take our, our information from?
We can. That's what I was wondering, we're going to have to go through the share screen.
Screen shake.
Yes.
Mason, you're free to share your screen.
Mark, do you have it pulled up?
I do.
Again, thank you guys. We're going back to back here on behalf of Stanley Martin Homes. And we honestly can't thank the planning staff enough for working with us on this. And really, before we start, we definitely took into consideration the community meeting and, you know, the public comments and concerns for the surrounding area. Because we definitely want this to be a cohesive product when we're done with this and for others to enjoy. And definitely something for Indian Trail to be proud of. We go to the next slide, Mark. So obviously before, this is located along Potter Road, just left of the Rain Tree neighborhood, north of the Potter Cove neighborhood. Just up from Forest Lawn Drive is your, your major intersection. Made up of forty-one, almost forty-two acres, nine separate parcels to make up what we're proposing. And as Matt touched earlier, we have a variety of different areas of municipalities and their zonings. There's Weddington, Union County and Indian Trail. You know, we have the medium density also in the Browner area, you're looking at the higher density SF five, what we originally were kind of going for. And then actually reduced back down based off of community comments and staff comments as well. As you see here is the Austin Village Comprehensive Plan. And as our site is located right at the very bottom, that was already in consideration well before we buy Indian Trail, before we actually obtain the site to do a proposal. Next. Guys, a little better rendering of our site and what we're proposing. As you can see is a hundred and one lots with the pocket park. That pocket park where is part of the amenities we're trying to add for Benches Lawn area, maybe potential, you know, neighborhood movie nights. We're also proposing a concrete meandering path through the natural area. And there's been talks of future. Yeah, future greenways, you know, in the area, either, you know, Cross Charlotte Trail and some other things that are, that are going throughout the state and very popular at this time. And I think typically most of those will follow like Twelve Mile Creek, which is located to the left and behind the property. So that might add a potential connection point for this neighborhood in the future. We'll be handling our stormwater control measures through the BMP, which you see there is the pond looking thing. And we had originally proposed two connections. One would be, as you see it to the north. This was discussions within C D O T and a preliminary plan review. When we were actually completing the T I, the traffic analysis, we had proposed another connection out to Potter Road on the lower half. N C D O T was not allowing that due to proximity to other intersections and interchanges. And they directed us to connect to the existing public right of way, which is Gene Place Court in the Potter Cove neighborhood to the south. And as we say, go ahead, Mark. I think you guys, some of the renderings of the house type, Stanley Martin, I mean, they definitely, they build a high end product. It's not your typical box cookie cutter subdivision that we're looking for here. We're obviously trying to fit this into the surrounding areas, which have some really nice homes and some really beneficial areas that people kind of want to escape being in more of a metropolitan area and get out a little bit into Indian Trail. The more renderings. To get an idea of the variety. So this we actually did was kind of a request with the community, with the adjacent communities to show proximity of our proposed homes to their existing home. As you can see, it's fairly sufficient. It shows the great elevation change with the Rain Tree neighborhood being the top rendering there. It's about a hundred and sixty-three feet between homes, which we actually proposed that landscape buffer to help break down of not seeing, you know, the homes in the backyards. To the lower one would be the Potter Cove neighborhood. That's some of those elevations, just where we've taken that section. Our homes actually propose on a higher elevation than they currently sit. Here's a typical look of what our landscape buffer would be with select species types. And that pretty much concludes it. I know we'll have some detailed questions and we're more than happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you, Mason. Chairman, Chairman, if it's okay, would you like us to start with a public comment? Okay, so as Matt Ward mentioned earlier, we're going to split it up. I'll go ahead and start with the first comment. I or we are writing you today to express our opposition to the revised proposal for the Glenhurst subdivision on Potter Road as submitted. The development as proposed, in my or our opinion, is still too dense as compared to the surrounding properties and neighborhoods. Traffic on Potter Road is terrible at times now and a development of this density will certainly make it worse. Traffic studies don't always tell the real story. The same applies to local school resources, which are stressed now. Parking is another concern with the small lot size, it seems to be inadequate. Similar homes on smaller properties can also affect surrounding values and that is a major concern. I slash we move to this area to get away from such dense development. We fear if this high density development proposal is approved here, others will follow in the area. Please protect the suburban country lifestyle of the area and reduce the quantity of homes in this proposed development. The town of Indian Trail has an opportunity and the authority to develop responsibly. And I or we encourage that the proposal is submitted with a reduction from a hundred and sixteen homes to one oh one homes on quarter acre lots. Be denied, the surrounding properties are all half acre or larger, which would be more reasonable for this track and bring it closer to the look of surrounding neighborhoods. Regards Todd and Melissa Ahern. And they're at fifty thirty-one Cambridge Oaks Shrives Matthews. And the second public comment is, we are writing you today to express our opposition to the revised proposal for the Glenhurst subdivision on Potter Road as submitted. In our opinion, the development as proposed is still too dense as compared to the surrounding properties and neighbors. Traffic on Potter Road is extremely busy at times now and a development of this density will certainly make it worse. School resources are already stressed, so additional students will only complicate the matters further. Smaller homes on smaller properties will also affect surrounding values and it's a major concern as well. We moved to this area because we were drawn to the large tree covered lots and peacefulness in the area. We fear if this high density development proposal is approved here, others will follow in the area. Please protect our suburban country lifestyle of the area and reduce the quantity of homes in this proposed development. The town of Indian Trail has an opportunity and the authority to develop responsibly. We would encourage the town to deny the current revised proposal as submitted with a reduction from one sixteen homes to one oh one homes on quarter acre lots. We realize that the development is probably inevitable, but if the developer could increase the lot size to approximately half acre or so, it would bring it closer to the look of the surrounding neighborhoods and help preserve the values of all homes in the area. Regards Myron and Mary Guthrie, they're residents of Cambridge Oaks at thirty fifty-six Scottsdale Lane Matthews. The next public comment is Potter Road cannot handle the additional traffic. As you know, Potter and Forest Lane is already one of the highest crash intersections in the county. And this project, along with the other ones up near McLendon, will certainly impact our neighborhood. Mark Cleary. Next public comment, I live on Potter Road and Indian Trail and write to strongly oppose rezoning for Glenhurst. I'm particularly concerned about increasing density in our community and the related congestion and related public cost such rezoning will bring. It's not fair to surrounding property owners like myself and my neighbors. The proposal must be rejected. Sincerely, Kevin and Barbara Giohan. And they're at one twenty-four Canterbury Lane Matthews. The next public comment, I'm emailing you in regards to the new Glenhurst neighborhood rezoning project that you are meeting on today. Me, my husband and two kids are residents of the Rainforest neighborhood off Potter Road. We're located very close to the proposed neighborhood and our cul-de-sac would border this property at the back. Our neighborhood is special. Not many of our kind exist anymore. We have large lots and older homes. Wildlife is abundant here and a part of our daily lives. Please come through and understand why so many of us want to keep the integrity of this type of neighborhood and why so many around us do as well. Our schools and roads can only handle so much. Antioch Elementary, where my son attends, has gone up in attendance drastically over the last two years, which I understand happens with growth, but we can't purposefully overcrowd a school when we know it's already overcrowded. Please take into consideration how much we love living here and the effects of this type of neighborhood would bring. I'm asking you, along with so many others, to deny this rezoning project. Thank you for your time, Sarah Hamilton. The next public comment. I am president of Wellington Woods Phase Four and Five. It's approximately eighty properties and all my neighbors have expressed their frustrations with the density of this proposed neighborhood. Many are planning to be on the Zoom meeting today. I have been out here since nineteen eighty-four and the very reason I moved out here was to get away from the high density neighborhood I was living in in Charlotte. Please do whatever you can to keep the current zoning in place. I can now barely get out of Potter Road at certain times. I almost got hit the other day because a driver was passing a man on a bicycle. Thanks so much. Charlie Clayton, president of Wellington Woods Phase Four and Five. The next public comment, my name is Linda Turner Presley and husband Gary. We live across from the proposed Glenhurst subdivision. We are totally against this rezoning. We have a problem now getting out of the driveway and the noise of the traffic keeps us from being able to sit outside. Besides all the traffic, our schools are already overcrowded. At times we have very low water pressure. A development of this size would create more problems for an overloaded water system as is. We ask that Indian Trail, Union County, please consider this rezoning. Please reconsider this rezoning. Gary and Linda Presley, they're at sixty-eight twenty-five Potter Road Matthews. And the next public comment, my name is Craig Brown and I am a resident of Wellington Woods directly across the street from where the proposed conditional rezoning may take place. I want to express my strong opposition to this proposal. Prior to this afternoon, town hall, due to concerns, home values, infrastructure, schools and aesthetics. Regards Craig Brown. And I'll turn it over to Matt for additional public comment. Well, we'll quickly say, we did receive some comments that were word for word. So via our town attorney's instructions, we have tried to consolidate that. So just wanted to make, make that comment. And then also just remind the residents and attendees on the line that they still do have opportunity for public comment until five P M tomorrow. Thank you.
Hello, everyone again. This one is from Donna Childers, public comment. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Manager, distinguished members of Town Council. I'm here to plead with you about the rezoning of Glenhurst subdivision. I'm a resident in Rainforest and myself and many of my neighbors oppose this rezoning. Although we do not know that this property deserves to be built upon, we would like for you to reject the proposed zoning of the SF four seat conditional and propose residential twenty, R twenty in its place with only the used land being counted for the, the homes per acre. The idea of using all these acres of forty-one and the average one oh one homes make the lots that were on the proposed plan point two five acres. That is high density as far as I'm concerned. Remember that we, the people of Indian Trail, elected you to do the best for our town. I want to think that promises made during your campaign must be kept. Before approving more and more buildings, please think of the impact in our schools, traffic and roads. They're in poor condition and many of them should be repaired. I know that this is a responsibility of the D O T to add, expand the roads and assign left turn signals on traffic lights to minimize the burden of the commuters, on the commuters. But currently we do not see this in the Indian Trail budget. It would make it worse for us. Also consider the impact of our well-established neighborhoods. The proposition on the conditional rezoning for the Glenhurst development is not what we need in our town. As you can see in the map, she did attach a map that planning board should have. It's basically surrounding neighborhoods calling out all the acreages. So she says here, as you can see in the map, I've attached the surrounding neighborhoods have a minimum of point six acres. We would like to keep our beloved Indian Trail that way. Myself and ten other neighborhoods, Rainforest, Potter's Cove, Moorfield, Cambridge Oaks and Wellington Woods, one through five are opposing this rezoning. I can only speak for my neighborhood, but in working with these neighbors, neighborhood leaders, I believe that we've also been showing some representation of the neighbors. Thank you for your time. Donna Childers. Onto the next one. To whom it may concern, this letter stands in opposition to Glenhurst subdivision. I've spoken before of the Pandera's, Pandera's Pandora's box, sorry, that this type of zoning change makes in these areas. Proponents of this rezoning can speak in one to two things. One is a tax base that adds by stuff in more mailboxes into geographic area. Second is that through annexation, you can combine services such as trash pickup or police cruisers, which is not much of an issue in this area. But at this time and each But at this time, and each and every one of your constituents in the area bought their houses and properties, some stretching back decades. Some only recently, we bought into that those that those that was placed on the belief that those who held the peril, power would uphold the standards that had been in the place for the area that they settled. Prioritizing the quality of life of many over the profits of few. Don't forget the prices we paid for these properties were, in fact, based on zoning that were, that we felt would endure at least short of a great upheaval in this area. I see nothing in this project that warrants a departure from the current zoning or diminishment of the quality of life. If the builder says that he has to build these many homes because of the price he's having to pay for the land, then the land is overpriced for this market, or his greed drives his business model. That should not be the problem of the current residents. If the landowner says in turn that his land is worth an exorbitant amount because of where it's located, then he is wrong. Because it is only a price he can get to you, get a few, the council members lay the burden of this rezoning on the current residents. The land value is based on zoning. The zoning decision should be based on the land price the owner is asking. The Martin Homes representative actually says they're asking a price of six hundred thousand K for for a tiny lot with a home starting at twenty-four hundred square square feet. A home does not even brick or no clubhouse, no parking, nothing, no park, nothing. Reference one oh eight PM on the five seven PM community meeting on December sixteenth. This is really insulting to our intelligence. Talk about a pump and nut. This insane number is thrown out there to try and make people feel good about the project encroaching on them. Yet your coun- council, yet you, the council, we have no way to hold them to this testless number after approval of the project. I have diligently scoured Zillow, but yet to find any magical unicorn-like market of what of which the representative speaks of. Only acreage and amenities drive those prices. This has neither. It was both an unremarkable design and layout. The Pandora's box that was the, that this would open became evident in the community meeting. Some people in the community meeting were asking, can I get my property rezoned to higher density? It's in the Zoom meeting, it's in the Zoom video at the meeting. You can watch it if you'd like. I know for a fact that some people owning adjacent land who signed the petition for annexation are recent empty nesters and maybe now look to cash out as they leave the area. Is that what the longtime residents are going to be a slave to in the future? Now the same people have enjoyed the protection of the very zoning that we have in this area seek to change it. Change it so they cash out on the backs of the people that would that they would call neighbors. Change in density so their, so their property is worth more. I understand this is a donut hole in the map. It is a thorn for you, but that thorn should not draw blood from the current residents as we gapple with this geographic problem. Union County Council should know that they would see stiff opposition as well if they try to push a rezoning through. We're all absorbing a lot of Charlotte's density problems, however, ask yourself, why would you want to take on more and more? They say that people are going to come, come through us to get to Charlotte anyway. I say that may be true, but maybe you accommodate that situ- situation more exponentially it becomes. I would much rather have the transient traffic than to accommodate overcrowding in this town through density, through density rezoning. Except for self-moving, self-serving motives, most citizens have not asked for more revenue and at the expense of their quality life. This is my final thought to any of the public that might care to read this. COVID has taken up a year of our lives, and during this time, developers have gone largely unchecked. And when I say unchecked, I mean by the public, not town government. We have seen the construction going up and down Chestnut Road. Ninety percent of you do not like it, and most of you have been complacent and voicing your opposition to it. To be fair, life has many worries right now. Maybe the projects were too far away to worry about, and therefore it's someone else's problem. Maybe it's because they cut the backlot trees down before clearing the road front trees. And by that time, it's too late to say anything. Remember, the Planning Board is only tasked with the feasibility of a project, and Town Council members don't have much leg to stand on if no one voices opposition. We can, you can wait till the wolf is at your door, or you can start thinking now what the vision is for Indian Trail in the future. So you can ask the right questions to those who elect to execute the plan. Sincerely, Richard Best, Moorefield Plantation. These kind of next ones is a series of all the phases of Wellington Woods, Potter's Cove, Wellington Place, Cambridge Oaks, Rain Tree Forest. It's a kind of condensed synopsis of of why they're against the project, and they have all their signatures, which we've shared with Planning Board. Says, we, the undersigned members of all the subdivisions I just mentioned, request that the town of Indian Trail reject the zoning request from the developer of the subdivision known as Glenhurst. We feel that the zoning change from the R forty Union County to the SF five would dramatically change the country feeling of the entire area. Most of us moved to this area to get away from the high densities housing. The high-density development will be more traffic congestion, air pollution, and cause overcrowding of existing schools. We ask you to keep our for our forty zoning and fast to see all the signatures. Going on to other emails that we received individually, Michael E. Davis. My name is Michael Davis. I live at one thirty-three Canterbury Lane in Wellington Woods, one. I've read the description of the proposed subdivision, and I'd like to point out that this development's totally out of character with surrounding neighborhoods. We do not need another high-density development adding to the heavy traffic we presently are experiencing on Potter Road and Stallings intersections. Let's see, with Pleasant Plains and Monroe Road, they could, the continued development of Western Union County with large-scale high-density neighborhoods is overwhelming. The road system and from my understanding, on the NCDOT situation, there's very little money available to alleviate the growing problem. I'm present, I am presently the president of Wellington Woods, one homeowner association, and can assure you that all thirty-five homeowners are in opposition to development. Okay, Michael Ramsey, I, we are writing you today to express our opposition to the revised proposal. The Glenhurst subdivision on Potter Road is submitted. The development as proposed, in my or our opinion, is still too dense as compared to the surrounding properties and neighborhoods. Traffic on Potter Road is terrible at times. Now, and development of this density will certainly make it worse. Traffic studies don't always tell the real story. The same applies to local school resources which are stressed now. Parking is another concern with these small lot sizes. It seems to be inadequate. Small homes on smaller, smaller homes on smaller properties can also affect surrounding property values, and that is a major concern. I slash we moved to the area to get away from such, such dense development. We feared if this high-density development proposal is approved here, others will follow in the area. Please protect the suburban country lifestyle of the area and reduce the quantity homes in this, quantity of homes in this proposed development. The town of Indian Trail has the opportunity and authority to develop responsibility, to develop responsibly, and I or we encourage that the proposal are, the proposal I submitted with a reduction of one sixteen homes to one oh one homes on quarter acre lots be denied. The surrounding properties are on half acre or larger, which would be more reasonable for this track and would bring it closer to the look of surrounding neighborhoods. This is regards Cambridge Oaks residents, as well as Michael and Christine Rasmann. Fifty sixty-four Cambridge Oaks Drive, Wellington, North Carolina. Toddham List, please see attached letter addressing opposition to the high-density development that is currently proposed. We like for suburb and could not imagine the traffic on Potter Road being any worse or more dangerous. And that was another Cambridge Oaks resident, Todd. All right, their letter here says, please do not dismiss this effort at communicating the road, these needs of the neighbors, even though there are not many people who responded, just a matter of people being busy and not everyone checking or responding to emails. And certainly, I agree, we cannot handle more traffic, and Mark Cleary's note is significant because he is the first, he is a first responder, and he would know what it's like. I'm sorry, they did not have a chance to sign a petition in that way as it is on the form. In the interest of time, it was thought that the email responses might be easier. Evidently, as you could see, it's hard to reach people. With all that you can see with the other petitions, etc., I would hope you would take the person's request seriously. Surely, there is another way to consider, there is another way to consider. Thank you, Judith Thomas. Mark Cleary did provide an email, Potter Road cannot handle the additional traffic. As you know, Potter and Forest Lawn is already one of the highest crashed intersections in the county, and this project, along with the other ones up near McLendon, will certainly impact our neighborhood. Going on, we got this in the middle of the process, the town of Weddington developed or adopted a resolution opposing the Glenhurst subdivision request. It's resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh three. Whereas the town of Weddington's council purpose is to represent the desires of its citizens and serve as a voice for the greater good of the community. And whereas a rezoning application for property located near sixty-seven hundred Potter Road is being presented to the Indian Trail Town Council as proposed SF five conditional zoning subdivision with a density of two point eight units per acre. And whereas the subject property is currently in unincorporated Union County and zone R forty and abuts property within town limits of town of Weddington. And whereas the town of Weddington recognizes that the large majority of citizens in the surrounding areas are not in favor of the high-density development and wish to preserve the current standard of living and not become urbanized. And whereas the town of Weddington recognized that high-density development puts a burden on the infrastructure, encourages growth, outpaces needed improvements. And whereas the traffic in the area is over capacity on Potter Road and surrounding roads cannot sustain additional impact from high-density development, which will negatively impact existing property owners. Whereas stormwater issues have been a problem in the area, they will increase this high-density development. Now, therefore, it is resolved that the town of Weddingman hereby request Indian Trail Town Council listen to the desires of the citizens and may take and stay consistent with the land use of low-density residential zoning of no more than one to two units per acre, adopted eleventh day of January. Going on to Cecil and Carol Turner, we live on Potter Road across from the Glenhurst development. We're developing, we're planning to go, we, we are totally against the rezoning proposed for Potter's Road, whereby approved one hundred and sixteen homes are to be constructed on forty-one acres of land. This amount, this amounts over five acres per, 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 five houses per acre, sorry. All you need is more tra- all we need is more traffic on Potter's Road. Where's, where traffic is nonstop all day and all night, we can't even sit on our front porch because of the noise from dump trucks, semi-trucks, and souped-up cars with loud mufflers. In addition to more traffic, what about the impact on schools, the water, the gas usage, etc.? We strongly, we are strongly opposed to this rezoning, any other proposals that has more than one house per acre, and we asking that Indian Trail and Union County, please reconsider this rezoning. And they're at sixty-eight thirty-three Potter's Road Matthews. Whitney Muller, I am writing you as a concerned citizen, Union County. I live off Potter Road in Wellington Woods. Subdivision, I'm very concerned about the rezoning for Glen, Glenhurst subdivision. The main concern I have is road infrastructure. Potter Road already has a difficult time handling the current traffic load. There are numerous intersections with issues. Three, three, three areas are Potter Road, Wesley Chapel Stouts, needs a lighter roundabout. Potter Road, Forest Lawn needs a roundabout, and Potter Road at Pleasant Plains Road needs widening and dedicated turn lane or light. The roads will not be able to handle the increased traffic this subdivision proposes unless these changes are made to the road system. There are numerous accidents every year at Potter and Forest Lawn. Traffic backs up a mile daily at Potter and Wesley Chapel Stouts. Potter and Pleasant Plains is a huge issue. The road conditions are terrible, and it's nearly impossible to make a left turn. This intersection has been on the docket since, since twenty sixteen with no changes made. I propose requiring the developer to put forward funds dedicated to, to repairing infrastructure to handle excess drivers or delaying any development approvals in this area until such changes are addressed and our road infrastructure can handle extra traffic. I hope you and your fellow planning team take these matters into consideration as it affects all of us who live in the area and these roads readily. Whitney Muller, one twenty-one, Weddington Drive Matthews. I think these are the last two. Dell and Mary, Ephraim, Mr. Warrior resigned. I reside at sixty-nine oh nine Potter Road and wanted to let you know I'm firmly against the rezoning of Glen Hurst, Glenhurst for that I live adjacent to. I feel the heavy traffic on Potter Road, school overcrowding, and the increased and decreased property values are just a few reasons why. Please note my objection and pass my feeling on to Town Council members so they may deny the application and keep the proposed properties low-density and keep them with the area. Mike Turner, Matt, thank you for taking time to bring up the speed, to bring me up speed on the proposed Glenhurst subdivision rezoning process. You have been very informative and helpful. I would like for you to know that my comments noted that I'm firmly against this rezoning annexation for many reasons and encourage the members of Indian Trail Town Council to deny the application for the following five reasons. One, as a property owner, noted on the adjacent property list on conditional zoning plans, he's number eighteen lot, by the way. My property will be negatively impacted by two entrances and a egress route of the proposed subdivision by adding to the already congested and unsafe traffic on Potter Road. Two, schools, as noted on the school comments document loaded into VAV site, give a true glimpse into the challenges our schools are facing with overcrowding and reduced resources to provide the best education to students of this area. The proposed subdivision will only make these conditions worse by causing potential school reassignments for students already living in the area and by bringing more tax increases to accommodate the new students arriving from this neighborhood. Number three, the areas currently are forty zoning and need to remain zoned as such and keeping with the surrounding area. Number four, delays in response times and resources for EMS personnel. And number five, the increased traffic delays for all surrounding intersections, most notably Chestnut Potter, Old Monroe Potter, and Stallings, and then Pleasant Plains Road and Potter. I have many more concerns, but wanted to get my general position to you before the meetings. I'll be virtually attending when the Zooming is saying, look forward to hearing from you. Mike Turner, six eight two seven Potter Road Matthews. And that concludes what we've been provided up to this date. Thank you for all, for listening. And we're open, as you know, staff's open to any of the Planning Board members' questions or concerns.
Board questions, comments?
Yes, so I see you guys have reduced the number of homes, so what's your appetite of, of something like the theme was half acre in that area or more? What's your appetite with reducing, I'm assuming the number of homes to accommodate at half acre per home?
We have looked at that option. We actually, during this process, and even then we presented to the planning staff, the surrounding areas within a half-mile radius of the current land use within Indian Trail lot sizes. And we actually made that reduction down, you know, following that Austin Village Comprehensive Plan. Economically, no, it does not meet their requirements. The problem is, yes, the cost of land does drive everything. The zoning doesn't necessarily drive the, the, the cost of land in general. Obviously, we're in here trying to rezon for another rezoning, but if we were to purchase property out here, and to try to get a less dense product out there, I mean, the homes would be double what's the surrounding to actually make it work, if that makes sense.
Hi. This is Michelle Reese. I have a question. So from what I'm understanding, if this is what we refer to as a donut hole in Indian Trail, what happens if the town turns this project down and the county picks it up? We just basically lose all the tax revenue? And I am not, I just want to say to all the residents and citizens that might be listening or reading, I'm not discounting how, how we as a community feel about this project. And I just, I, I, I'm looking at the, at the monetary value of it and knowing our community and that we have these donut holes. And there's really no way for us to win. You know, we either give in and, and, and put our foot down as a community, saying, no, we're not going to go like that, or we just say, we put our foot down and we don't get the tax revenue. Union County does, and they get to use our, our roads and our, our, everything that, that we provide as a town. So I guess my, my question as a whole is, if we look at this project outside of the resident's view, and I'm not, not that I'm discounting that because it is very important, but the control that we as a town of Indian Trail have is limited to what we can do within these donut hole factories. And I want to know, if we say no to this, then what happens next? Do we lose all the tax revenue for how much? I mean, and that's, I'm going to mute myself again, but if somebody could just address, I, I realize it's a big question, but I, I mean, I'm, I want to really want to reiterate that we appreciate the community's involvement. We need it. I, I know this is a lot of community. I, I know this is a lot of community comments on it, but when, when it comes down to the basic rule of how we operate as a town, if we say no to this, then from what I understand, the county can say yes. And we still have to do all the work and they get all the benefit. So if somebody could just please touch on that, thank you.
Board member Reese, I'll, I'll be glad to attempt to answer that question. So the, the county and all the municipalities came together in August of 2019 and decided that we were going to do something about all of our fringe areas, our donut holes. It causes mass confusion, duplication of services. And, and our map looks like a map that I've, no jurisdiction I've ever worked for before. You know, and, and we all know you can drive, you know, a minute and be in three or four or five different jurisdictions. So very confusing. And so the town has really on, I mean, excuse me, the county has really honored what, what they said and what came from that meeting in that we are going to try to push development in these fringe areas and in these donut holes to the municipalities so that we can kind of get some sense of borders, try to close up some of these donut holes. And they, they have honored their word. They've done a good job with that. This is a, an example, a project that's an example of that. We do not know right now what, what would play out if the town were to deny this project. The developers certainly could go back to Union County for approval. I do know that Wesley Chapel is in a situation like that right now where it's gone to the county. So it's, it's a good question, but, but we have not tested it as, as a town to know how that would take place, but it certainly is something that could happen that the county could potentially approve it. And then you get the, the impacts without the tax base. Thank you, ma'am.
I have a question around the donut hole idea here. And on that screen, we show the proposed, I have a question, what, what is there in this section? Between two sections, it's, the, the print is too small to see the lot numbers, but this, yeah, that area right in current lots that are owned by homeowners or who owns that property?
They, they are owned by.
So they're all part of Indian Trail now?
They're not, they're still in Union County.
Okay, well, so Brandy, when we do this and we have the different municipalities get together, and I understand the purpose of that, we would still have this block of land here, these three parcels, it looks like that are Union County, right?
Correct. So I, I would, I would give an analogy on this. It's kind of like our requirement for sidewalk. You know, you, you have to, to take the opportunity to build the sidewalk when the developments come, and then you hope that it pieces together. Some of these donut holes projects that we have, it completely cover, closes up that donut hole, but most of them are going to have a parcel or two. So it, it's not going to be perfect, certainly. But, but we're trying, you know, with the county to do the best we can to make our borders a little bit more reasonable.
And I have one more question about a development. So what, what is the requirement for having a, a single entrance only? I think this is 100 units. What is the threshold when you have to go to a second entrance?
Todd, you could probably correct me, but it's 100 units, I believe.
It's actually 50.
50 in Indian Trail? I thought it was 100 for doing.
I think it's 100 for the county, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, 100 for the county and so 50 for.
Correct.
But this, this development only has one entrance or is there one back here on this very lower section?
We actually tie into the existing public right of way that is Gene Place Court on the south.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, I definitely, I'm with Michelle Reese on, on the, not that I will want to infringe on another, that that I'm ignoring the, the residents. I definitely, I definitely hear them loud and clear, but I, I believe what will happen is we turn it down as a county, union, I'm sorry, as a municipality, as town of Indian Trail, whatever you want to call us. Union County won't build what they want to build on it and they probably not going to go with our, you know, we, I think Indian Trail, we allow great builders to come in to make quality properties. I'm sorry that it does not go with the current area. I wish we could have it blend in. I don't know if the builders would be willing to, I don't know how much difference we'll make, but I mean, I know we have to have, have it priced a certain way. And a lot of those homes, oh, we are probably priced outside of what the median income is, because I think a lot of those home prices are priced very high. So I guess they're, they, they are afraid that it's going to affect their bottom line, which I don't think that it would because I, I trust that the builders are going to provide a great product. I just think that is, I, my only concern would be if we don't take advantage of it as a town, then Union County is going to come in and put whatever they want to put on there. And it might not, it might be 200 homes. So you know, like it might, you know, so it might not even be, it's not going to be anyone's jurisdiction, but we don't know that yet. I guess my other thing is I do, I am concerned about the, the, the traffic with those streets that they had named and their, and their concerns, you know, the, the concern that they addressed. And I wanted to know how and what will be the plan to alleviate this traffic and also provide safety as we build, you know, potentially build another community in that red spot. Like Potter's Road is a big concern and Fairlon, I think that was the other one. So is there a plan, like what are you guys discussing the plan for this traffic or?
So, sorry, we had, sorry, somebody else speaking up to it. So yeah, we had our, our traffic impact analysis completed. Again, this is one of those situations that Potter Road unfortunately is an NC DOT roadway. We would love nothing more than to have the options to make additional improvements. I know on other projects we've talked about and designed and proposed roundabouts and traffic alleviating solutions. But we are again kind of stuck with the governing body that is NC DOT and we have to take direction on what they recommend. And that is what they're recommending here. We will be doing an asymmetrical widening that'll obviously meet the requirements of the TIA and what we agreed to at Matt brought up previously for the left turn lanes and the right turn lane into the neighborhood. But also they recommended that connection to Gene Place Court as an additional not to congest. I do push the thought that most of the municipalities are really, I think what the problem we're seeing with these congestions, these things that none of these neighborhoods connect, there's no connectivity and that always seems to be an issue. So we're giving multiple options out of, you know, one community, but we're connecting two communities to it. And that always is, is just been a, an idealism really from, for the way we look at traffic impact that we can't really control for NC DOT, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to the traffic situation. This is Todd with the town of Indian Trail. The, the Potter Road, that, that road right there, it's, it's about 10,000 cars a day currently. This road is part of the roads that we have submitted as a town to the 2050 MTP plan, which is a, again, it's a long-term transportation plan that, that we as a town are, how can I say this? We're a part of a CRTPO transportation travel regional organization and they come out with a 2050 MTP plan every five years and we're, they're updating it now. And so all these municipalities submit roads that we feel are needing future improvements. Unfortunately, with the 10,000 cars a day, this is never going to get on DOT's radar as a division need until it gets around 18,000 cars a day. So I, I hate to say this, but you know, it's, it's a reactive situation. It's not a proactive situation. So if you don't get the trips, you're not going to get the improvements. And so I'm not advocating putting more vehicles any, on any roads per se, but I'm just telling you how it is in the world we live in and unfortunately, but it is on the plan to go from two to four lanes. I did submit that not too long ago, but again, it is a, a project that will not happen in, in the future until the traffic warrants it.
Wow, DOT is something else. You have to have 18,000 cars before they do anything?
That's correct. They, they recently put Wesley Chapel widening on their prioritization list as a division need, but the only reason why that got put in two years ago is because it hit the 18,000 threshold. So if, if you're not getting into that realm, you know, and they've got bigger, obviously bigger roads to, to deal with, like highways and stuff, you're just not going to get it.
Well, can I ask some, what about the, the little traffic circle that they did in front of Sardis Elementary over the summer? That gets 18,000, 18,000 cars?
That is, that was a safety project. That's due to the high mortality rate of crashes. So we got $50 to do that project.
What, so is there anything, say, because Potter's Road is like a suicide mission? That's not, what's it, did you guys look at the safety in that?
That, I think that's more, that is more towards Weddington. That is not, that is not towards us with Chestnut Lane intersection and stuff, because we have a, a pretty much a fully built out intersection up to the north of this subdivision. But Weddington, I would assume they did get a roundabout south of here years back, but I don't know what their traffic needs are.
Todd, I have a, I have a question. This is regard, in regards to, like you mentioned, the Chestnut Potter Road intersection. And if we, if we advance a little further into what would be Stallings, we have, what is that Pleasant Plains and Potter Road? I believe that's a planned traffic circle. Is that correct?
Yep.
No, that is not. That is all left turn lane additions. So you get lanes on all four sides.
All right. So that, 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 that's happening at Potter Road and though.
Yeah, that is currently on, on, on a, should start probably in the year if I had to guess.
Alrighty. I just, you know, wasn't sure what was happening up in that, up in that region. I've seen some traffic circle considerations or thoughts there. I know one thing you probably will attest to this, that if you've got traffic circle after traffic circle, the traffic never stops. Okay, on a, on a busy, dense, you know, scenario, you know, drive time, the traffic never stops. So these people will never get out of their neighborhoods. So having that controlled intersection at Chestnut does help the area. And I don't know what's happening down at the cemetery. You know, that's Forest Lawn Cemetery that intersects, that's a crazy intersection. The way that it turns back sharp, it's just really not safe. Do you have any input on that? Because that's the next major intersection really coming through.
No, due to that fact, that's in our jurisdiction, I have no.
Okay. Thank you.
And then they need to put some lights up, like not traffic, like with some, especially in that Fairlon, they need to put some streetlights up. I mean, I know that's not Indian Trail, but it's Indian Trail going over there. This is like crazy dark.
Any other questions, board?
Just one general question, are, are you guys formerly, or did you guys purchase Essex Homes?
Sorry, go ahead. I'll answer that. Stanley Martin purchased Essex Homes about a year ago. We're primarily east coast builder, if you will, obviously national builder, but you know, we also have operations close to west, working currently on, primarily run the east coast right now. But yes, to answer your question directly, Stanley Martin did purchase Essex Homes back in February 2020.
Okay, and I'm assuming you guys like their product?
Yeah, actually, the biggest reason was the cultural fit because their, their values as an organization and also the product and the quality of product, because Essex Homes has always been known for quality product and the companies matched up with their values, their mission and overall just a culture. And ultimately, we just, you know, we look out for the customers and, and both companies build a great product and that's why we, we saw it was a great fit for both to come together.
Yeah, I agree because I have an Essex Home, that's why, that's why.
I appreciate that.
On the home density, if I can just play devil's advocate here, we've got a lot of green space around that backside of the subdivision. We have just the required trap or pond for our stormwater. And one thing I'm seeing in surrounding neighborhoods is that that pond does not exist. So I'm guessing that we're anticipating that there's going to be problems or there would be problems if we didn't have the pond, is that true?
No, ever since 2007, it's now required to provide post-construction controls ordinance. So it's required by the state and depending on what we do with stream impacts and stuff like that, state and local and federal municipalities that we install best management practices. So everything that you've seen around in the areas surrounding were probably built prior to 2007.
Yeah, that's, that's a fact, no question.
But no, there is no anticipation. What we're doing is providing control volume and water quality control, which is now required for basically all developments.
Okay, so also in this green space, we have a trail network. I don't know how extensive it is. How critical is that? Let's look at density. Okay, let's look at how tight these homes are together in comparison to the adjacent neighborhoods. And it's obvious, I'm seeing some of these lots are twice, three times the size of what's being proposed here. How critical is that, is that trail network to this neighborhood?
It's just a part of the amenity. The trail network is something that the town requested and, and we, we actually abided by it. We had no problem.
Also satisfies the tree save requirements for this project of 15%.
That was going to be my next thing is, are you asking about the tree saver, the trail?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any, anybody else? Okay, Brandy, I think we are looking at the end of the meeting.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Madam Chair, I did just want to remind everyone that is listening. The board will receive additional public comment at the beginning of the meeting on Thursday at 6:00 PM and then the board will take a vote. This is due to North Carolina state laws surrounding COVID. And those links are listed for anyone in the general public that doesn't have the link to Thursday's meeting. Those links are listed on the town website at www.indientrail.org. We again will receive public comment up until 5:00 PM tomorrow. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, I'll entertain a, a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Madam Chairman, this is Michelle Reese, I make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone not in favor, say nay. Okay, and let's all wave at Larry's granddaughter. Thanks, everybody. See you Thursday.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night, everyone.
Okay, good night.